You are on the record.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, December fourteenth, and the time is nine o'clock. The board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. Also with us, I'll start over here. Sir.
You.
Jordan Coyle, Idaho Sightworks.
Char Roberts, Trash Billing.
Kevin Bitner, Ada County.
Sean Rain, Paramedics.
Deborah Phillips, Ada County.
Bruce Crisco, Operations.
Mike Work, Operations.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Robin Twining, Procurement.
Alyssa Ellington, Procurement.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communication.
IT guy.
Emma Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
And we have our distinguished.
Bob McQuaid, Assessor.
Bob McQuaid, Assessor.
Beth Mon Treasure.
And we have Emma Taylor, right? Yeah, okay.
And up on the bridge.
And up on the bridge, we have Dottie Owens and Mr. Rutherford, and we have a late entrance.
Richard Back, Development Services.
Okay, we're ready to go. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, they're not.
We have one resolution this morning. I'll open the, the public hearing on the resolutions. It's a resolution adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue to the Ada County Emergency Rental Assistance Consolidated Appropriation Act budget. Is there anyone here that wish to speak to this resolution? Hearing none. I will close the, the public hearing on resolution number two seven oh seven. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number twenty seven oh seven as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, and I might note for the public that the resolution is moving four thousand two hundred and one dollars, or four million, two hundred and one dollars and three hundred and twenty-six. Four million, right, four point two, give or take. There you go.
And that's the emergency rental program.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hello.
Good morning.
Morning. Moving on to licenses, we have a number of licenses. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including two catering permits and three new licenses, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have our distinguished clerk, Phil McGrane. Do you have any, any good updates for us? Only give us the good ones.
Only good ones? All right.
That's, that's a good rule from now on.
Yeah. Thankfully, I've had less attention in the past few days. I, I, you know, it's good on my end. The, one thing, so I've mentioned it before, the precinct changes and then also the commissioner districts. With the holidays and stuff, timing's not great, but I think we're gonna work on that in, despite the lawsuit with the redistrict reapportionment process, because the statutes set firm deadlines for January, right? So we'll just have to adjust after the fact.
When, when in January?
So for precincts, it's the fifteenth of January that the deadline is. For commissioner districts, it's any regular meeting in January.
Any regular meeting, okay. Well, the court's on the fourteenth, so we'll probably have to decide.
We can push the commissioner districts till the end of January, that's not a problem.
Oh, I mean, the precincts.
Precincts, we have, yeah, fourteen, you think they'll be done the, the morning of the fifteenth.
I don't know what they'll do.
Yeah, but I, just to let you know, we're gonna try and squeeze in at least one or two public meetings. Just let, you know, there's not a lot of people who have an interest, but the people who do will have a strong interest, and, uh, so we're working with IT to, to get that part going.
How difficult is to change the precincts after the Supreme, Supreme to make a, make a decision?
I think, you know, the one nice thing is the commission, the reapportionment commission has been really good based on the advice I give about using major roadways, and so it shouldn't be too disruptive. There will probably be some spots that get split, but it, it would probably end up being, you know, a handful of precincts that we'd need to tweak, where most of them would be fine.
How about the numbering, however?
Uh, that, yeah, that would actually change significantly. The numbering would.
Is that easy to change?
It should be, yeah, and we'll just plan on a notification process. If you, you probably recall more than most, or you probably were involved writing this, when we changed from the one, two, three to the four, you know, legislative district numbers. That works so well in terms of being able to identify where is why, and so we'll do that again.
That's a really good system.
Yeah, like, just in my head, when someone tells me a number, that even the second two numbers tell you, it starts from the upper northwest corner and then kind of right to left. So if someone tells me a number, I can usually plant like, oh, this is here, right? And so we'll try to keep that same scheme again.
Well, that's great.
Yeah.
That's great.
So that's, that's just happening. There's a lot of work on our end to do that. But I should also note, we are starting the cleanup of the November election. The AG's office issued an order last week releasing all the ballots and all the stuff from the recount. And so we're starting to gear up for the primary and start focusing on the future.
But there hasn't been any kind of challenge or anything, because that, that.
There has no suits, despite what rhetoric has been out there, no suits have been filed.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No, thank you.
Thank you, that's. I'll entertain a motion on the claims journal.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated December tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We, next up, we have the personnel actions. We have three conditional pay increases, five-step increase, increase sheriff's play plans, pay plan, six market adjustment, one merit increase, two performance increases, and one transfer. Do I have a motion on the personnel actions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda. Let the summary sheet remain unfounded in Commissioner's office.
Second that. You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have with us our distinguished assessor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, we had talked about property tax relief, and I told you that I was doing some work and some research. Commissioner, Kenyon had asked that if I could, if we could get a list of income brackets based upon age. We've got that from the U.S. Census Bureau, and I've got a copy of that if you would like.
Oh, great.
And I have one for each of the commissioners if you would like it also.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Also, I had mentioned a publication put out by the Lincoln Land Institute, whose property tax ready for homeowners, it's just a great.
You're having trouble sleeping?
How was that?
If you're having trouble sleeping?
Not I, it just, it is, to me, it's absolutely fascinating. Some people will be great reading if you're going to sleep. Anyway.
Why, we appreciate you, Bob.
Thank you. I told you that I would get copies to you. I brought one, a hard copy one, to see if you would want to, one for yourself. I, I have two more in my office, and I could get those over to you if you wanted, but it's just a great.
Well, it's fine, we can just initial it and pass it on.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
And.
Start over here, Thomas Reed.
Also, I was able to get something from the Lincoln Land Institute. It's on, a book is summarizing on taxes freezes, tax freezes and freezes on assessments. There are about, how about fifteen states that have either assessment freeze or tax freezes as property tax relief. It really is targeted mainly at people sixty-five. It goes down a little bit to sixty, fifty-five, mainly sixty-five. Most of them have some kind of an income test available, but as I mentioned last week, Texas, and this isn't optional, but statewide, school taxes are frozen when you turn sixty-five. The local option, you will say, here, Boise Schools could, or excuse me, Ada County could say, we're gonna freeze our property taxes for seniors over sixty-five. There's no income test at all. So it's the taxes and freezes, they're out there, they're interesting. Again, it's about seventeen out of the fifty states have freezes on assessment for taxes. If you'd like more information on that, I can get that to you. Lastly, I'm just, we'll end up by talking about more tax cancellations. Almost all of them have to do with the house bill that changed the filing date for home state exemptions. We're now up to just about one thousand three hundred and fifty, with a total of a hundred and fifty-five million dollars taken off the roll. That'd be about, that's in assessed values, that'd be about one and a half million dollars. But it really is not really significant in the whole scheme of things, either for us or, or other taxing districts. North Ada Fire actually will see a decrease of about their budget revenues brought in, actually see a decrease of about five thousand dollars. That's, that's the worst. Boise Schools, they've got, they're to the good of about seventy-three thousand dollars after all of this is taken into consideration. So, yeah, we're not gonna be getting as much as we planned on, but it's gonna be offset by the occupancy tax. All right, that's the good news from the assessor's office, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No bad news.
Not that I'm gonna.
Okay, good, well, we don't want the bad news. Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you, Bob. Next up on our, on our agenda is we have tax cancellation slash adjustments. We have a hundred and, a hundred and six tax cancellation adjustments. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which include two tax cancellations for twenty twenty and a hundred and four for twenty twenty-one, and authorize the chair to sign documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a, a second to the motion?
Second.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have with us our distinguished assessor, Beth.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, the good news is, is we are in the final days of tax collections, just four more days after today. We're seeing that the nature of the transaction is changing. Early on, it's high-volume transaction, lower dollar amount, and what we expect to see the next few days are the large wires. So even if you observe fewer walk-ins, staff is diligently balancing massive wires. That's what we'll be doing. The other good news is that we are very good at processing tax cancellations. We hope to receive those from you today, if possible, because at this point, these are manual adjustment. So the quicker we do these adjustments, then the less likely we run into the situation of an overpayment, a refund, and we can correctly tell the taxpayer the new taxes owing as a result of this tax cancellation. So as soon as we receive those, we will be processing those today. Again, taxes are due on Monday. We offer a lot of ways for taxpayers to pay. We have three drop boxes right now. We've made it easier for taxpayers to pay online. They could pay by phone, by credit card, and we're fully staffed at Cloverdale, and that facility will be open until Monday, and then we'll be here Monday night assessing a two percent late charge as we are required to do by law for payments that we've not received.
Taxpayer pays by credit card, did they pay the, the fee as well?
Correct. The taxpayer pays that, and it's a two-point-four percent fee.
Okay, and these tax cancellations, people still have until the end of December to file for a homeowner's exemption?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. They have until eleven fifty-nine on December thirty-first to file for a home state exemption.
So we'll still be getting these into the next year?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we will. We figure probably maybe in, well, into January that we'll still be processing those.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Beth, what was our, the collection rate at the end of last year? I know with COVID, we were concerned that folks wouldn't, some of them wouldn't be able to pay their taxes, but we had ended up coming pretty high, didn't it?
We did. We're consistently in ninety-nine percentile.
Yeah, it's a good indicator.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to development services, with us is, we have a final plat, project number two zero two zero zero eight six four dash S, Avamoor Town Homes North Subdivision. Do we have anybody here wants to speak to this? You wanna talk to it a little bit, or not?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, yeah, just a final plat, twenty-four lots at the very north end of Avamoor, on the right side. We need to leave the county, county line there, and the staff has reviewed the, the plat finds it in accordance with Ada County Code, state code, and complies with all the applicable conditions of approval, and we recommend the board authorize the chair to sign what?
Is that up by the, by that parking lot for the trail?
Mr. Chair, and this is kind of where they have that rodeo area.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
It's where the elk come down.
Okay. Good elk. All right, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve application number two zero two zero 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 eight six four dash S, Avamoor Town Homes North Subdivision, and authorize the chair to sign the stamp and sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have trash billing. Trash service suspension request, is there discussion? You have something to tell us?
I'd be happy to just share a little bit of information.
Sure.
Sure, good morning.
Um, in front of your, for consideration is a trash order suspension request for account three three five two one three. Looking back on the notes of the account, this particular property has a long history of being in a state of non-occupancy. I was able to verify with the assessor's office, there's not a homeowner's exemption in place, and I talked with the assigned appraiser, who agreed that the last time they were out there, the structures look unlivable, so I feel comfortable recommending this one for approval.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes, I've read the, the request, and I'm willing to make a motion to go ahead and approve the trash suspension request as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that motion.
You've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion on the, the motion carries. I'll entertain a motion on the approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to weed and pest, we have a number of liens. I'll make, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the five notices of liens for weed and pests as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have a certificates of state use for the purchase of fuel.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize the chair to sign the certificates of state use for purchase of fuel from Franklin United Oil, DBA United Oil, Coenergy, and Lynch Oil, LSC, for weed and pest.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have one interim agreement at Ex, at Barber Park. I have a motion.
I move to approve the one interim event agreement as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
It's for Expo Idaho?
It's for Expo Idaho.
I'll second that.
Okay, one agreement for Expo Idaho, uh, has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Now we have four Barber Park education and event center agreements.
I move to approve the four Barber Park education and event center agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have, uh, take up agreements on the agenda. Is there any discussion on the agreements?
Mr. Chair, I've reviewed, reviewed the agreements, and I'm ready to make a motion.
I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, I move to approve the ten agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have five procurement items this morning. We're gonna have some bid openings.
Drumroll?
Positive, positive results, everybody.
Everybody, press your fingers.
Well, we'll have the first bid opening of two-two-zero-zero-one, rebid of the Ada County Coroner's Facility.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Before you this morning is the opening of bid two-two-zero-zero-one, the rebid of the Ada County Coroner's Office Replacement Facility. We received four proposals for this project, and Alyssa has our Bonfire E-Procurement System opened, and if you're ready.
We're ready.
We can proceed forward with the opening. Go ahead, Alyssa.
Drumroll.
And as Alyssa's opening this, just a little commentary on, this is the rebid. We originally went out to bid back in August, and we received two bids. One was non-responsive, and the other was over budget, so this is our second attempt at this. Just to note that we're looking for the name of the bidder today, a bid amount, which will have the base bid amount and the owner's contingency of two hundred thousand dollars in there. Also included is an option for a deductive add alternate. Should the total bid amount come in over, over budget, we can start to look at those deductive alternates to be able to deduct out of that bid. So, Alyssa's got this spreadsheet open up there, and it, yeah, there we go. So, I'll start with Anderson Construction is our first bidder, and they have a total bid amount of thirty million, four hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars. The second contractor is Bobo Construction Incorporated, and they have a total bid amount of thirty million, six hundred eighty-one dollars, or thirty million, six hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars. Third bidder is ESI, and they have a total bid amount of twenty-eight million, four hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars. And finally, we have Leyton Construction with a total bid amount of twenty-eight million, seven hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars. So those are the four bidders, and those are the bid amounts bid.
Well, how many of those are based here in Boise, if any?
Uh, one, two, three of them, it looks like. Oh, actually, all four.
Uh, just two. ESI and Anderson are locally based. Leyton's out of Salt Lake, Bobo's out of California.
I thought Anderson was out of Seattle, or out of.
They're here.
No, they're out of Seattle, unexecutive.
Okay, their main office. Okay, so good, you got some local companies, excellent.
So, we have those four bids, and we will need a little time to take a look at this. Bruce and his group will need to review these bids, and we'll make sure that they all make the administrative requirements. So, we'd like to request this be tabled for award recommendation to the December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one Open Business Meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
So I move to table the award of bid two-two-zero-zero-one, rebid Ada County Coroner's Office Replacement Facility to December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second that.
Any, any further discussion?
Well, Dottie's up there, so maybe Dottie wants to give a yahoo, yahoo shout out.
Yeah, I'm pretty happy with that. We're, we're a lot closer than we've been with this thing, so. Yeah, big sigh of relief here on my end.
I'll sleep tonight. Okay, good. Gonna have some.
I have some good reading material for you, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Bruce, have we worked with these companies before, or we have a history with any of them?
I've worked with ESI before. I haven't worked with any of the others. Oh, Leyton, I have, Leyton, I have.
We're using Anderson right now.
Anderson downstairs, yeah.
All the one. Okay, well, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
We'll see you on the twenty-first then. All right. Okay, go ahead.
Our second item for an opening today is a bid two-two-zero-one-one, the Ada County Jail Roof Replacement Section Ten, twenty twenty-two, and we received two responses for this project, and Robin has our Bonfire E-Procurement System open. If you're ready, we'll go ahead and proceed.
We're ready.
All right, Robin. So on this project, we're looking for the name of the bidder and the base bid amount, which will have also an owner's contingency of thirty thousand dollars in there. There's the two bidders. Okay, the spreadsheet will be opened up here, and our first bidder is Nations Roof Mount LLC, and they have a total bid amount of three hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Our second bidder is Upson Company, and they have a total bid amount of three hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred dollars. So those are our two bidders and the bid amounts, and the evaluation team will need some time to take a look at these bids, and we would request that this be tabled for award to the December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one Open Business Meeting.
Great. I'll make the motion to move to table the award of bid two-two-zero-one-one, Ada County Jail Roof Replacement Section Ten, twenty twenty-two, to December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We now will take up bid number two-two-zero-one-two, Ada County Courthouse, fourth floor carpet replacement. Bob?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid two-two-zero-one-two, and we'd like to submit this letter of the bids received and a recommendation for award for your consideration.
Okay.
Uh, the letter is dated December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-two-zero-one-two. Dear members of the board, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid two-two-zero-one-two, the following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. Bidder number one, Dillaboss Flooring America with a bid amount of one hundred and five thousand dollars. Bidder number two, Wall-to-Wall Commercial Flooring with a bid amount of one hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. After reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two-two-zero-one-two to Dillaboss Flooring America as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of one hundred and five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid two-two-zero-one-two, Ada County Courthouse, fourth floor carpet replacement, twenty twenty-two, to Dillaboss, uh, in the amount of a hundred and five thousand.
Second that. You've heard the motion, uh, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, we'll now take up the, uh, review of the bids and receive, uh, award of recommendations of public work projects. Uh, two-two-zero-one-three, Faces Hope of Carpet Replacement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid two-two-zero-one-three and would like to submit this letter of the bids received and a recommendation for award for your consideration.
Okay.
Uh, letter dated December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-two-zero-one-three, dear members of the board, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid two-two-zero-one-three, the following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. Bidder number one, Dillaboss Flooring America with a bid amount of thirty-four thousand dollars. Bidder number two, Wall-to-Wall Commercial Flooring with a bid amount of forty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. After reviewing the bids submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two-two-zero-one-three to Dillaboss Flooring America as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollars.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid two-two-zero-one-three, Faces of Hope Carpet Replacement, twenty twenty-two, to Dillaboss Flooring America in the amount of thirty-four thousand and four hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we'll now take up the, uh, recommendation on bid two-two-zero-two-two, Ada County Jail. Will-Be Comodes Purchase.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Ada County Procurement received four responses for this project, uh, this is the replacement of some of the commodes, uh, out at the jail. And, um, we would like to submit this letter of the bids received and a recommendation for award for your consideration.
Okay.
Uh, letter dated December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-two-zero-two-two, dear members of the board, Ada County Procurement received four responses for bid two-two-zero-two-two, the following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. Bidder number one, Cornerstone Detention Products Incorporated with a bid amount of thirty-six thousand, five dollars and sixty cents. Uh, bidder number two, Equiparts Corporation, uh, they were non-responsive, they did not sign their bid form. Uh, bidder number three, Mark's Plumbing Parts, uh, bid amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and eighty cents. And bidder number four, Security Furnishings LLC with a bid amount of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and twelve cents. After reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the purchase order to Security Furnishings LLC as the lowest responsive bidder in the bid amount of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and twelve cents.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the valuation committee, award bid two-two-zero-two-two, Ada County Will-Be Comodes Purchase, twenty twenty-two, to Security Furnishings LLC in the amount of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and twelve cents.
Second that.
You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, is that it?
That's it for today.
Okay.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We went through a number. Good. I guess we'll see you back on the twenty-first for sure.
That is for sure.
All right, well, good luck with your review.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, next we have, uh, uh, con- consent to transfer of Civic Plaza, Plaza Limited Partnership Interest. The Civic Plaza Apartments, uh, next door, is there discussion regarding the consent to transfer the limited, the Civic Plaza Limited Partnership Interest?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just that, uh, we have a letter that came in today from CCDC, um, showing that their board meeting was held and their, um, their board approved it as well.
Yes, I've reviewed that letter. Uh, may I have a motion?
Sure, based on the information provided by counsel, I move to approve the requested consent to transfer of limited partnership interest in Civic Plaza LP from AMTAX Holdings, two-zero-zero-one dash GG LLC and Protec, two-zero-zero-two dash C LLC to Steadfast CPLP LLC Delaware Limited Liability Company owned by Mr. Rod- Rodney Emery and authorize the chair to sign the consent letter on behalf of the board and staff to send the signed consent to Steadfast Companies and CCDC.
Okay.
More initials than behind your name.
That's some competition.
That's some stiff competition.
Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have a stipulation and, uh, uh, an agreement for lump sum settlement case number IC, number two-zero-two-one, zero-zero-zero-seven-four-seven, do we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the stipulation and agreement of lump sum settlement in order of approval and discharge in workers' compensation, case number IC twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-seven-four-seven.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. And we'll be in recess, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
If you're ready, we're ready, get out on the record.
Let me get you there. You are on the record.
Good morning, today is Tuesday, December fourteenth, uh, the time is, uh, nine forty. Uh, the Board of Commissioners, sitting as the Board of Emergency Medical Services District, is in session to conduct its weekly Open Business Meeting. All three Commissioners are present, also with us are.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
And.
Phil McGrane, clerk.
Phil McGrane, clerk, and we have Elizabeth, an IT guy. Okay, ma'am clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, may I have a motion in the Claims Journal?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payments of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated December tenth, twenty twenty-one regarding EMS expenditures.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Um, you've heard the motion, uh, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, do we have a motion on the minutes?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have three agreements. Uh, agreement number one-four-five-three-six, blood draw agreement. Motion, uh, agreement number one-four-five-three-seven, uh, business associate agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical Services and the City of Boise. Agreement number one-four-five-three-eight, a license agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical Services and the City of Meridian for temporary access in construction. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sean, what's the business associate agreement?
That's the HIPAA portion.
Oh, the HIPAA, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the three agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have, uh, miscellaneous and easement for City of Meridian, five mile pathways, is there discussion on the easement?
This is the one we already talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion, um, to approve the easement for City of Meridian Five Mile Pathway, authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion, uh, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, gives an update.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. On that easement, uh, I'd like to thank Bruce Crisco for the work that he did with that and just ensuring that everything's gonna work, uh, efficiently for us, but uh, on a COVID front, uh, we are seeing what appears to be a slight uptick in the number of cases that we see. We're still under five, but the data has really flattened out and we're starting to see maybe a, a, a trend upwards, so we'll, um, really have to watch that closely over the next few weeks. Um, had a meeting with St. Al's, the, the president of St. Al's Boise in St. Al's Nampa last Friday. One interesting thing, you know, just from the crisis standards of care, they, uh, St. Al's main campus now has a backlog of seven thousand surgeries.
Whoa.
And they were saying that even if they operated at a hundred twenty percent of capacity, they would, uh, it would take them six months to catch up on the surgeries that they delayed because of crisis standards of care, but, um, outside of that, the hospital systems are, are starting to recover, you know, the, I, they're gonna be, uh, in continuing standards of care for quite a while, just with the, the number of surgeries and, and patients that they have to see just that have been backlogged. One good, uh, thing that I, I heard this morning is that Pfizer is going, going for approval of their, their oral medication that, uh, reduces hospitalizations by eighty-nine percent, so it's kinda like the monoclonal antibodies, but more in an oral form, it's an antiviral. Uh, but, uh, so that's, that's a good thing on the, the fore, on what's coming. Um, I've been watching the Omicron variant very closely and I've only seen one death that's been reported, it was out of the UK, um, just in the last few days. But still, the trends that they're seeing, the, the cases with Omicron have been very mild so far. Um, it is far more transmissible, so, um, but, uh, you know, it's still so new, this, that was just reported on the twenty-fourth, so we're not even a month into the, the Omicron variant, but we'll watch it very closely.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Does St. Luke's have a similar backlog?
Yeah.
I'm imagining six months more, probably.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, the, all of the hospital systems around here are gonna be backlogged for a while with, uh, those kinds of procedures.
Yeah, and I assume they're prioritizing those.
Yeah.
Based on, yeah.
Yeah.
Severity. Severity.
Well, Pfizer medication has not been approved yet.
Not yet.
It's been submitted to the FDA, I understand that. And it, it does seem to be, if it's taken within five days, start to take it in five days, it eliminates up to eighty, ninety percent in some cases of hospitalizations.
Yeah.
It does kind of do what the monoclonal antibody treatment will do as well.
Yeah.
So that's pretty good. Now, you're noticing a slight uptick, is that, that's from your, your business, is the overalls in, in Ada County? Is that a slight uptick as well in their positivity rates?
I, you know, the, it seems that our data tends to perceive that data by a week or two, and so we'll have to really watch the, the caseload in Ada County to see if that starts to trend upward. I think the key with, with this, if, if the uptick that we're seeing is because of Omicron and not Delta, is really more along the lines of increased number of cases isn't necessarily mean increased number of hospitalizations. You know, and so until there's a real correlation between Omicron and, and that, we'll just have to, to watch it very carefully.
Is that Omicron, does that show up on, on our instant tests?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the day after we put in the purchase order and they had been shipped is when, you know, we started looking at the, the Omicron variant, and, and I had a moment of panic, I'll admit. But did some research and, and it still does detect that, the Omicron variant. So the antigens are still there and it'll pick that up.
And when will we receive the tests?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, we have the test now. What we're doing this morning, last week, our, our infection control officer and Ryan LaRondo sat down to produce a video, a training video for people to use on how to administer the test. And it was, it was a little rough, so we're redoing that this morning, and we'll get that produced. What we're gonna do is put it up on our YouTube channel and then send that out to department heads so that they can provide that training to whoever they want to be able to provide the, the testing. And then we're gonna work with the operations department to actually distribute the tests like we've done with the PPE in the past. One key, and I mentioned this to the department heads yesterday, is that when folks are administering this test, it's gonna be important that they, they mask up with an N ninety five gloves and glasses, you know, so they actually have to, to wear the protection because you're getting right in somebody's nostrils when you're performing the test and we don't wanna expose somebody unnecessarily, so.
Sure.
So we have that PPE.
And that's all part of the video training.
Yeah. Yep.
Is there gonna be like a point person or a couple of them, if the departments are larger, that?
Yeah, that's, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, that was kind of the ideas to have for some of the larger departments, like the Sheriff's Department has, and juvenile corrections have either medical assistants or nurses.
Like public defenders.
The public defender's office to have a few people that are trained in, in performing the tests so that they can even assist, you know, you could have the patient swab their own nose as long as you're making sure they're doing it appropriately. The rest of it is just, you know, adding the reagent and swirling the swab and the reagent. Test strip goes in and then you read it at ten minutes, so, pretty simple test. This is one that's commercially available in stores now. That's been one of the difficulties, you can buy the Binax Now test, the one that we were using at Walgreens, but you can't buy hundreds of them, you know, so the, the Binax Now test is one that is on federal allotment, and that's what's causing an eight week backlog where we just couldn't get those tests in there. They're a little more simple, I wish we could have got those, but this test will work fine.
Are you gonna be responsible, Phil, in the clerk's office for doing that?
I don't know what's gonna happen here. We'll wait for our, our training video.
It's pretty simple.
Well, and then the, the.
Draw straws.
Is, is, is problem, yeah, you know, they, okay, they sell them at Walmart and they sell them at Walgreens and stuff, but they're always out.
Yeah.
So if you actually, if you actually need one now, you can't get one.
Right.
That's the whole reason why we wanted to make them available for our employees and, and if, so they can find out.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, what I've heard recently is there's more availability in the stores, but we're kind of, you know, on the, the trough, if you look at our surges. So if we start to see an uptick again, or we get events where somebody has to produce a, you know, a negative test where they take a picture of it and take it into a concert or what have you, you'll see a run on those tests again. So at least we've got the tests available for our use here, so it's a good thing.
Well, it's not for our employees to be able to go to concerts.
That is correct.
As if they think they're sick.
Not for them to go to concerts.
Okay.
Yes. I don't suppose the hospitals told you how exactly they're gonna prioritize patients for the backlog of surgeries?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, they didn't, but I, I, I would imagine they're gonna use a triage system much like we do with anything else and looking at acuity and, and kind of working from the top and, and on their way down, you know, prioritizing those things that are a threat to life first, and then, you know, going down to things that are more immediate and elective surgeries would certainly be much farther down, down the list.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you. Uh, one last thing for the board. I am gonna be out for the next couple of weeks, I'm gonna take a couple of weeks of vacation. So I won't be here next week or the week after, but if I don't see you before then, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, you too.
Well, Merry Christmas to you, yeah.
Oh, have some fun.
Yeah.
Have some fun.
You deserve it.
Are you traveling? Good, have fun, whatever you're doing.
All right.
That's great. Okay, we'll be in recess. Well, good morning. It's nine fifty five. The Board of County Commissioners is in session as the Board of Avmore Community Infrastructure District Number One Open Business Meeting. Today, the day is Tuesday fourteenth at nine fifty five. Okay, are there other changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, we have the Claims Journal.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payments of claims in the Claims Journal dated December tenth, twenty twenty one, regarding Avmore CID expenditures.
Second. You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have approval of minutes?
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second that.
You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're in recess.